Big span.
Well, good morning. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, June 1st, 2016. And as always, will you join us to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's another warm morning out there this morning, so probably record-breaking temperatures. I think we have a little bit of business to change our agenda here at the beginning.
Sure, I can make the motion. Mr. Chair, I would move that we remove the last item on the board's action agenda. It's under Contract Review Board to consider a waiver of minor informalities in a bid submitted for the asphalt concrete resurfacing of various county roads.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remove that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that little bit of business is done. We've got public comment. David Beam, you're here. Welcome, David. It's good to see you again.
I'd like to see the county commissioners approve a job thing for disabilities for Marion County, for all Marion County, for the ones who can't read and write in the city, because it would be good for Oregon and be good for businesses here, work with them better in the city and the county. We're investing in that program for them, because a lot of them work in workshops or going, not working. Some of them are going to be cut programs, some are going to be cut. So I was talking to the Goodwill and Garden Foundation, and they said they're going to lay some disability people off. So I'd like to see if we can keep that program going for Garden Foundation and Goodwill program for them, for the county.
Okay, any comments?
No.
Questions?
I don't think so.
Good idea, and I don't know if that, what do they call those structured?
Sheltered workshops.
Sheltered workshops, and I wonder if that's what they're getting caught in. We do work with Garten quite a bit, but I don't know about Goodwill and particular programs that may be, but we'll give it some thought.
Yeah, that would help the House and Senate programs for the state, too, to keep their money there and invest in that program for jobs for them, for the county. And it would save a lot of money down for the families.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to consent calendar.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd move today's consent calendar. Under Business Services, Human Resources, approve a recommendation to adjust salary ranges upward for human services trainee and election board workers. Approve a recommendation to adopt and establish a new classification guaranteed attendance program or GAAP case manager number 203. Under Juvenile, approve the intergovernmental agreement with Lynn County to allow periodic use of Lynn County juvenile detention beds for Marion County juveniles in the amount of $5,000 through June 30th, 2017. Under Legal Counsel, receive a petition for annexation of certain property along Talbot Road South to the San Yam Water Control District and consider an order setting a public hearing for June 29th, 2016. Under Treasurer's Office, approve an order to correct fiscal year 2015-16 first and second quarter state timber distributions and approve a resolution increasing the change fund at Public Works from $400 to $600.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a consent calendar. Any further discussion?
You know, Lori's here. Maybe she's here because she wanted to know if we had any questions. So why are we correcting the distribution? Yeah, you want to just, do you mind if we just tell us briefly?
We can do this.
That way we're not here in vain.
Do this under discussion.
Good morning, Lori Steele, Marion County Treasurer. I was just here in case you did have any questions. I tried to be thorough in the description that I sent in for the backup for this issue, but when the new taxing district was formed for 4-H and service district, I did not get that added to the first and second quarter timber distributions, and they should have been. So this corrects that, takes a little bit of money away from the districts that would not have received it had I distributed what I should have to the new district. It wasn't a lot of money, and I'm sending a letter to the taxing districts that are affected by that. So it shouldn't cause any problems for anyone, but it does get everybody where they ought to be.
Great. All right, thank you.
We like to keep everybody balanced and fair.
That's right.
Or fair and balanced, however that goes.
Well, we have a budget committee meeting for that 4-H district coming up pretty soon, so.
This week?
Yeah. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you for explaining that, and thanks for your thorough explanation in the materials you supplied to us. So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So under Action, our first up is Community Services. Consider approval of Marion County Reentry Initiative memorandum of understanding to collaborate and support consistent service delivery goals and data compilation for entry clients, reentry clients in Marion County. Tamara and Jeff, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tamara Getch, Director for Community Services and a partner with the Marion County Reentry Initiative. As you mentioned, the item before you this morning is a memorandum of agreement that outlines the way that the team will be operating to help serve clients in our community or individuals in our community that are reentering from incarceration. Jeff is here to talk more specifically about some of the services and supports, but I just wanted to mention real briefly the number of organizations that are included in this MOU. However, this does not, it's not an exhaustive list. It's just those that are providing concrete services and supports to help the initiative advance. So those are the Marion County Board of Commissioners Office, Bridgeway Recovery Services, Schmecata Community College, Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency, Marion County Community Services Department, Marion County District Attorney's Office, Oregon Department of Corrections, Family Building Blocks, Insight Incorporated, Marion County Sheriff's Office, and the Prole and Probation Division in particular, Union Gospel Mission of Salem, and the Marion County Health Department. We work as a team monthly, and we review this, our work plan throughout the year, and this memorandum just solidifies the way that we're going to operate and gives us an opportunity to seek other resources outside of county and resources outside of the county's supports, and will help us to hopefully bring in resources to better serve those individuals in need of this support.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jeff Wood. I'm the Prole and Probation Division Commander with the Marion County Sheriff's Office. And just to give you some history and context to the-
You pull up closer, a little closer, Jeff. Thanks.
Just to give a little history and context to the Marion County Reentry Initiative, when I was looking over the MOU last night, it kind of occurred to me, if my memory is correct, which is suspect sometimes, back in 2009, the whole reentry initiative really was a sole-source contract where we had one contract with a private nonprofit that provided, quote, "reentry services." We got a reentry services manager. Along that same timeline, although we had other services affiliated with MCRI, that private nonprofit no longer was able to provide those services. And I was rather new to my current position with the Sheriff's Office, and I remember sitting with Commissioner Carlson, and she came and we were talking, and she said, "I have a scathingly brilliant idea the other night." And although she was providing a humorous context to a very serious issue, it was a very profound thought nonetheless. Instead of doing this sole-source model, we kind of migrated to a collaborative model where you had entities, government entities, like the Board of Commissioners to provide leadership, Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, Schmecata Community College, Community Service, the Health Department, and DOC, the major state entity that releases the more than 600 people who return to our community every year, come together with private nonprofits who can provide services like housing, treatment, resource referrals, and family supports for that population. This collaborative model has worked incredibly well over the years, but nonetheless, I always kind of equate it to spinning plates on a stick. We have a number of entities that come together that provide services, and we need to keep the momentum on the plates, so to speak, so that everything doesn't come crashing down. Hence the need for this memorandum of understanding that delineates the services that these providers serve for our population, and also kind of gives roles and responsibilities to the entities who are part of this memorandum of understanding. We've had a version of this memorandum since 2009 off and on. It has been growing. It is expansive, and I guess I do consider it kind of a living, dynamic document. But nonetheless, I think it shows what, it really gives kind of testimony to Marion County and what kind of community this is, where you have leadership from the Board of Commissioners Office, the Sheriff, the District Attorneys, all the way down as service delivery people who come together for a very common cause, which really is to enhance public safety for the people that are returning from incarceration. Now, this also includes, I had mentioned the 600-plus who are returning from the Department of Corrections every year. We have another 200 that return to our community from a local control sentence, and we have roughly 1,800 people on probation. All can be affected by this memorandum of understanding. I will say again, this MOU, the MCRI model, it does work. This has been recognized on a national level. MCRI has received an achievement award from the National Association of Counties. When we received our first Bureau of Justice Assistance Second Chance Act grant, we were part of a control group evaluation study, and we are currently part of a randomized control trial, as you all know, as part of our 416 prison diversion program. And so, again, just reflecting on how strong Marion County is, how communities can come together for this common purpose, I would ask for your support for this memorandum of understanding.
Thanks, Jeff. And Tamara, I noticed on page 29 of your 35-page presentation, the ORC chart, and I think that's something that is, for anybody watching, of course, all these materials are online, shows the picture of how many partners are involved and how the leadership is coming from so many different directions and the input that we have in our community. So I think that's a great example that you've done. I'm sure the Commissioner helped organize this ORC chart a few years ago.
Just a little bit.
I remember sitting in the meeting, I was a state representative, and I remember Kimberly was running that, and things kind of fell apart and what we're going to do. I wasn't part, I wasn't getting the midnight call from the Commissioner, though, about, "I've got an idea." I think I was out of the loop on that one. So, thank you, Commissioner. Questions, statements, thoughts?
Yeah, a couple comments. Well, first of all, scathingly brilliant ideas come out of the Haley Mills Fan Club, so you need to understand that. And Jan Fritz and I were both members of the Haley Mills Fan Club when we were younger. So we have, this memorandum of understanding actually replaces a couple of, more than a couple, but the most recent ones, we had two different memoranda. One of them was for a United Way grant, and the other one was kind of just our general memorandum of understanding. And we created this so that everybody, all of those partners that you saw on the ORC chart, really could say, "We all mutually agree to do these things. If we're going to be part of this Marion County Reentry Initiative, here are the things that we commit to." And there are some general things that are listed right at the outset of the memorandum that everybody's agreeing to, like collecting data and advocating and being part of the group. And then there are individual sheets that go, that each organization signs that says, "Here's my special part of the reentry initiative. So I'm going to provide this service," or "I'm going to contribute this resource," or whatever. So you'll notice that for the Board of Commissioners, ours looks a little bit different. We didn't follow the standard form because we're really not providing any programmatic contributions to the reentry initiative. Rather, we're providing leadership and policy and oversight and resources and that type of thing. So ours starts on page, let's see, what is this, 5 of 35, if you're looking at the, that little thing at the bottom, the PDF numbers. And so, when you run through them, offering leadership coordination, staff support to the Community Corrections Board. So on that chart, the Community Corrections Board really is the legal entity that oversees community corrections, because the county by statute oversees community corrections. And through this agreement, the Sheriff's Office and the Board of Commissioners came together and said, "We'll jointly co-lead community corrections in Marion County." The second item talks about the Public Safety Coordinating Council, which has played a role with community corrections, particularly in justice reinvestment. And this is the first memorandum that we've had that references justice reinvestment. So we're really taking the reentry initiative and not just looking at people that go to state prison and come out and reenter, but looking at people that also are involved in these other programs where they might be held accountable in the community, and then resources wrapped around and help to move, for people to move forward and gain positive lives. We talked about the community outreach and the Giving People a Second Chance annual event, the breakfast event that we have. The Board Office contributes a great deal to that in terms of staff time and also resources. We oversee the budget and the contracts for prison diversion and reentry transition services, and Commander Wood has brought us a number of those contracts in recent weeks. We participate, Commissioner Cameron, you participate in the Governor's Reentry Council. And when I was reading through this last night, this is my error because I helped type this page, it's the Senate Bill 969 Task Force. I just kept getting mixed up on the bill number. This was way back when January, I think, before the task force started, and I was trying to remember it off the top of my head, which I never do. So we'll need to fix that, but fortunately, there's no signature on this page, so it should be an easy fix. With that, various state agencies, the Oregon Legislature on policies and strategies. We also participate in other forums like the Jobs Council and the Coordinated Care Organization and the Behavioral Care Network and the Children and Families Commission, and all of those entities and resources and people can help influence some of the things that we do with our reentry initiative, that while that's not their main focus, we work to actually, with the Jobs Council, for example, to have them be a partner and help us use their resources to help this particular population. And one of the things that I'm interested in doing this year is really looking at healthcare and mental health to make sure that while our clients are eligible and they get signed up for insurance, is their access good? You know, I mean, I think that's the major question that I don't really have a clear answer for right now, and so I'm going to work on that this year. We do some grant writing, and we've been successful on a number of our grants. And then we actually hold and help coordinate some of the planning meetings and work groups and so on that are held in the Board Office. So that's really our contribution on this page that we're signing off on today, and then signing off on the entire agreement. And I won't go through all of those line by line, but you can see the wheres at the beginning, and then there's A through J on page three that talks about all of us are agreeing to evidence-based practices, to data collection, community awareness and engagement, and those types of things. So, I don't think I have anything else. Appreciate the work that Tammy has done in helping coordinate the, all of the paperwork and the things that we need to do, shuttling this through the various organizations. It's not easy to get signatures from all of these different entities, and her staff has really been helpful. And then, of course, Commander Wood, and the successes that he talked about would not be possible without the just outstanding work of the parole and probation officers who have helped oversee and manage all of these programs and have such passion and dedication to their work.
Comments? No, no. But obviously, there's a lot of people working hard, trying to and accomplishing good things, so there certainly needs to be supported. And as such, I'd make a motion that we accept the recommendation, which is to approve the memorandum of understanding agreements among partner agencies that serve Marion County reentry clients.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any further discussion? No, other than I noticed the first signature on one of these is like back in January, so it is a long process to get everybody to sign, so thank you. Okay, all those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Juvenile is up next. Consider a resolution amending the Marion County juvenile detention facility population. And I understand that the Director has had a flat tire between here and somewhere.
That's correct.
And Chuck is with us today to present, and Bruce, welcome.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Bruce Armstrong, Senior Assistant Legal Counsel with Marion County Legal. Traditionally, the Juvenile Department has had a capacity resolution establishing the maximum number of juveniles that can be held at the detention facility over the years. And the reason that that is set is that so you don't have more juveniles held in detention that can be reasonably kept or safely kept, given the resources and staffing that is available. So that's traditionally been done. Juvenile, and we did a search for the prior or the current resolution establishing the maximum capacity level for the detention facility, and the last one was in 2005, which is before the new, I still call it new, detention facility was completed. So there's some discussion, and there's a need to update our, the resolution establishing the capacity limit for the juvenile detention facility. Based on the existing budgeted resources and staffing, it's recommended that that be set at 32 juveniles is the maximum for those held at the detention facility. And I think Chuck can speak to some of the, what the Juvenile Department has been doing in terms of identifying the appropriate youth to hold or not to hold. And one other thing is, on your consent agenda, a few minutes ago, you approved an IGA with Lynn County that would allow for juveniles to be held at Lynn County if Marion County is at capacity or if there's a need to hold juveniles, and they can't be held at the Marion County detention facility. So I just wanted to provide that bit of background.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name's Chuck Cybrant. I'm the Deputy Director for the Marion County Juvenile Department. Bruce is correct. The little history is we have a 54-bed facility. I believe it was about 2008 or '09, due to budget cuts and a changing philosophy in the judicial bench. We closed one unit of 24 beds. That leaves us with a current 32-bed capacity. That's been pretty consistent since that time. We occasionally run up against more kids needing to be detained than we have room, and we reached out to Lynn County. They were interested, and when we get to that point, they will offer up to four beds, I believe it is, at any certain time. What we have looked at is historically where we are in our process of releasing youth early. And a committee was formed internally. They've looked statewide and started to compare about four different counties and have narrowed it down, we believe, to one draft that the Honorable Judge Partridge has reviewed and support. We will also be presenting that to the Board of Commissioners to look at. It's primarily based on Deshugues County's various review of what they take into account in releasing youth versus keeping youth. And we believe that, well, I need to mention, of all those that we did look at, none have been evidence-based. It is all based on current county needs, current resources, and various, if you're in Multnomah County, you have a number of resources where you don't even place youth in detention because you have those resources, versus Marion County is limited in what options they have. So in each county, it will look different. However, we believe we have something that is workable and brings more protocol and process in releasing youth, identifying which youth will go to Lynn County and which youth will remain in Marion County.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I did, I don't know, Chuck, I could catch off the top of your head, but how many are currently housed in detention or average something of the 32? What's standard capacity?
Our average has grown from 23, 24 average daily population. We're around 28, and we usually go back about 12 months. Since the calendar year started in January, we've bumped up against 32. It's usually for a couple, two, three weeks, twice in that last period of, what, five months now. So it's becoming more and more of an issue because we are missing some needed services in the county. And usually, it's tied to youth waiting for state resources that are currently not available locally.
You've kind of answered my next question, but I'm just curious if there's something else going on right now that are coming up against the limit, looking for expansion with Lynn County. Is there, are you seeing some trend or something that we should be aware of?
I would say the trend is, the youth we're dealing with have multiple issues. It's not just the criminal behavior. It is also mental health behavior. We also house youth that are charged with measure 11 crimes. That has gone from two or three youth to eight, 10, 12 youth. That vacillates and has an issue in regards to our daily population. So it's a combination of keeping the youth safe, keeping the community safe, as to who we are able to maintain in our current, the current detention center versus releasing them to community. The community is lacking some wraparound services that we could use. However, at this point, budgetarily, we're not able to meet that need.
All right, thank you.
Can I add to this conversation? So we've been working on this Pay for Success project. I haven't talked about it for a while, but you remember, we wrote the grant, the one we had to actually pay money for, get technical assistance in working on that. And we had a bill in the, not 2016, but in the 2015 session for the same services that was unsuccessful right at the last minute that Representative Jody Heck helped us with. And interim Representative Denise Bowles actually introduced the bill for us. So this would create these wraparound services, actually, that Chuck was talking about. It's a, it's a model not too unlike what they call multi-systemic therapy, and our Health Department's done that, but it has a focus not only on the behaviors of the children or the youth, but mental health needs and really works with the whole family in the context of their school relationships and their family relationships and their peer relationships. And so what we've got right now is, what Fay talks about, is kind of a gap in our continuum. So we have some great services for kids that need to pay restitution and are maybe lower risk or maybe have less complex needs, maybe aren't in lower risk, but have less complex needs. So they're working out in our, they might be in our GAP program, or they might be working out in the Wood Program or the Fresh Start Market or all the really great things that we have. And then we have detention, and then like Chuck was saying, then what you have to do is you actually have to refer kids to the Oregon Youth Authority to get residential services. And residential services are not the ideal situation for youth because if we were living in Multnomah County, we'd just be sending our kids kind of close to home. But we're in Marion County, we're sending our kids to maybe Multnomah County, maybe Lynn County, but maybe even Klamath County or over, isn't there one in Umatilla County?
Correct.
So you can't continue to have, you can't work with the family when the youth is clear across the state. So, so you can't continue to have, you can't work with the family when the youth is clear across the state. And then the other problem that you have with residential is, and residential used to be, this is before we had the budget note, I can't remember, two thousand and nine, something like that, where kids would stay, what, a year, a year and a half in residential? But now there's kind of this new model where it's about ninety days, and they're supposed to just kind of get what they need and go out and then transition with the family. But if you haven't actually changed the dynamic of the family and you go have the youth get well in residential, and they come back into the same family dynamic with the same friends, so and it's the same issue that we've talked about with adult reentry, they're not going to really thrive in that environment. So having this program that we've talked about would really fill that gap. We think that if we can get our arms around the Title IV E issue, because you know, the department came to us, Chuck came to us, I can't remember, a year ago, something like that, two years ago, it's been a long, all right, a while ago, and said, you know, we've got this contract with the Department of Human Services, and we can use this money, I mean, we will get reimbursed for the activities that we do to avoid placing kids in residential care, right? Is that the main, right? So if you use this model, it's exactly what the money's designed for. However, the estimates that we got initially on the IV E were a couple million dollars, maybe?
Originally a six hundred thousand per year.
Okay, one point two million for the biennium.
However, that, yes, that was based on one hundred percent participation, and it's highly unlikely any department would have one hundred percent participation of youth qualifying for the reimbursement.
So it took them a while to get it going, and then there are, were some major red tape administrative things that I learned about more recently. But now they, I think we've identified some of the, of the hangups in terms of, of working on it, and, and also, I think we're, the department's committed to use part of the money that they have to get a management analyst, right, to help Vicki Johnson with, who has been doing the lion's share of the coding and all this kind of thing. And then we have this budget proposal that I happened to mention briefly when we were talking, which would, would help take some of the administrative work off of the parole, the probation officer, sorry, so that they have more face-to-face time with the family. And if we can get those things in place, we could use a portion, or we could use this money to do a portion of the program that we wanted to do. So we wouldn't have the full meal deal that we asked the legislature for, but we, we could do a portion of it. And then we're still negotiating through the pay-for-success with maybe they would be funding outside of the funding that we have now to be able to do more of that program. But I'm just firmly convinced, the more I hear about all of these things, that we just, like faces, we have that hole in our continuum of services. And I don't think the answer is to try to build more residential services closer to home. I think it is to find more of these in-home types of interventions that can help the youth and their families and stay at home and be safe and change the whole dynamic that the family is working in. So I don't know if you have any thing you want to add to that?
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson.
And yes, that's the key is to working with the family, keeping the youth connected to their school, connected to their family, work through the issues here in the community. We believe that is the key to changing the whole dynamic. If we can continue to, even if this is just seed money, and we continue to see positive impacts by developing and implementing this program, all the better for, for our community.
So I guess my point is it's just part of a bigger issue that we'll be, I think, talking more about when you do your budget presentation and
Yes.
we have that conversation.
Yeah, getting more success, not just locking people up, yeah. Okay, let's see, where were we?
So I think it's my turn to make a motion if the board is ready. Did you have anything?
No.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the resolution amending the Marion County juvenile detention facility population limit as presented.
Yeah, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, I will read the calendar. That concludes our official business. Today, from noon to one o'clock, we're at the Woodburn Marion County Meeting up at Luis's Taqueria, five two three Front Street, Woodburn. You going?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner, are you going to be there?
Yes.
Okay, wow, this would be great. Well, the trifecta.
And I'm bringing Lisa.
Oh, okay.
She gets to see what we do.
Great. We have at two o'clock today, adopt a budget for the service districts. And that is up here in this building on the fifth floor, Silverton Conference Room. Tomorrow, the second, seven AM Salem Chamber Public Policy Meeting at the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce on Commercial Street. Also Thursday at nine thirty, Fiscal Year two thousand sixteen seventeen opening budget session, Budget Committee right here in the Senate Hearing Room. Wow, that'll be my anniversary too, two day, two years, two days.
Seems like two.
It seems like two days. It's gone by so fast, yeah. Okay, and then on Monday, the sixth, at eight forty-five AM, Budget Committee, we will be here, back here in the Senate Hearing Room. And then on Monday, the sixth, at four o'clock, Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Task Force location at the Kaiser Civic Center in Kaiser. On the seventh of June, Tuesday, eight thirty AM, Calendar Review in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the seventh, nine AM, the Marion County four H Budget Presentation, you referred to that, Commissioner, here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the seventh, at eleven AM, a work session on IT audit report here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the seventh, at noon, Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Task Force Focus Groups Coalition Coordination Subcommittee here in the Salem Conference Room on the first floor. Tuesday, the seventh, two PM, Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network Budget Committee and Board of Directors. And that is in the large conference room at two nine six five Ryan Drive Southeast, Suite one fifty in Salem. Wednesday, the eighth, we're back here for our board session at nine AM. Wednesday, the eighth, eleven AM, Executive Session for Bargaining Pursuant to ORS one nine two dot six six zero two D here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. And Wednesday, one o'clock, we are here for our budget hearing in the Senate Hearing Room. Okay, and we, I'm not sure if we've got these photos or not. Well, we got a few photos. I think Mark's really doing his technical, technological, I can't say a few words this morning. What was the other one? Compilation or something?
Compilation.
Compilation, yeah. We got a few photos.
Is this the Gallen House Bridge thing or?
Yeah, so you guys won't be able to see him, but you have the list.
Yeah, right, so, you just hold up your finger when you, and we'll have something to say about that finger when you hold it up.
Do we have the one?
Yeah, he's got, he's got here. The first one is me, of course. It has to be about me, right?
That's probably the most boring one.
Yeah, the most boring one. So yesterday, we were at the, the Gallen House Bridge Celebration for a hundred year celebration, and I don't know what this photo shows. It's probably me in a car or something like that. But on the way there, I was looking behind me, and we'll go to the next photo if you can, Mark. Yeah, Commissioner Carlson's waving to the crowd. There was about fifty people out there. It was well-attended. And we're in these vintage cars. But the one that was right behind me is the next photo. And it was, this car was, the, the bridge was built nineteen sixteen. This car was in nineteen oh six. And I don't think it was the person in it, but it was certainly having a hard time chugging up the bridge as I looked back behind me for Commissioner.
Really, what are you trying to say?
No, it was a, it was, it was a cool deal.
Can I say, my car was built in nineteen thirty, in nineteen thirty, and it's owned by one of the public works employees.
Yeah.
So I had a chance to meet him.
So what kind of car were you in? Nineteen, nineteen oh six?
Nineteen oh six Maxwell, and he said he thought they were bought out by Dodge. I don't know that either. But it's hand crank and feather start. In fact, I had to help him hold this, hold that. And it finally heard a little, it's not really a pop, it's kind of So you better get in, but what I would, I don't know if it's that picture, but Jolene took one, and I'm, I'm smiling pretty hard, but I'm smiling pretty hard because I'm trying to stay. It's just a buggy, you know, that they put a motor on, and there ain't no seatbelt or nothing to hold it in. And I was looking at the ground pretty, pretty clearly, so, anyway.
Yeah, okay, and then we've got, I think the last photo that we have today is a photo of that bridge. And for those people watching, if you haven't been out to the bridge, it's, it's the longest, it's the oldest continuous-use covered bridge in Oregon. Started in nineteen sixteen, and we just celebrated the hundred year anniversary. There is an older bridge in Oregon, but it has been moved to a private property. And actually, that bridge moved slightly down river during the flood of, what, was it sixty, sixty-two or sixty-four? Was the bad flood. So we had a good time out there yesterday. Mark, thank you, and Jolene, thanks for putting those pictures up for us.
Let me think what I got out of that. Oh, first of all, it was kind of interesting. We had the last three public works directors were there. Jim Sears, Bill Booster, and Alan, the current one. So that was fun, and a lot of people were some historical. I, we heard a story, and maybe you could, I'm still not quite sure how it related to the bridge, other than the person was talking about his grandfather working on the roads that lead to the bridge. I had an impression for a little bit, like the bridge was built and then they built the road, so I don't, I don't know. We, I should have got that answered yesterday, but
I'm sure it was just a gravel road, right?
Oh, sure, sure, sure. That's how they all were.
Yeah.
My grandfather talked in the St. Paul area. They'd sell rock to the county in wagons, you know, horse wagons, pick a little dump at some.
I thought it was a great ceremony. I thought your remarks were really good. I learned a lot of things that I didn't know about.
He was just making it up too.
Yeah.
Did you catch me when I said today was the birthday, May thirty-first?
Was it?
Some lady wanted to know if the bridge, if the opening of the bridge was May thirty-first because it was her birthday.
So you just said it was?
So, so I talked with Public Works, and he said, "It's a good day, just say it."
Oh, that's bad.
And you had one in three hundred and sixty-five chance. It could have been true.
So, no.
You were convincing. I was ready to go out and get a cake.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, it was, it was sometime
Wow, that's really impressive.
Sometime in, sometime in May, but we just made it up.
Exactly. We'll have to be on guard in these work sessions.
I always tell people when you're talking to the press, don't make things up, right, because they'll find out, well, that was, that was Public Works said, just use May thirty-first as the opening date. That lady will feel really good that it was her birthday, so, yeah.
Well, and you probably got the lithograph that one of the people that, I thought she said that he was there at the, at the celebration.
In the show?
Yeah, did the snow picture, I can't remember how long ago, ten years ago, twenty years ago? And she wanted, he wanted each of us to have a copy of it. So we brought back one for each of us, and we have one for the office that Gordine is framing that she can put up.
I thought it was pretty appropriate. I, I don't know if it was, if it was planned that way, but all the construction of the new roads being overlaid, I think some people had a problem getting there because of all the construction that was going on.
They kind of fully said, "Road closed," it kind of like, like, "Don't come."
Right.
Yeah, that was Hobart Road.
Right, we should have Well, and, yes.
Yeah, Hobart, yeah. So, but the roads out there were looking pretty good, and they were working on them, so. And on this contract, hopefully, we will get that contract redone and get some more roads paved.
Well, we want to thank CCTV for being out there too, because they filmed it. That was really great.
Yeah, Mark said they got a lot of good, good pictures.
Change subject just a little bit. So tomorrow, we start budget stuff serious.
Yeah.
To me, that's, it's a long hard one. There's just no two ways about it. But I, and I'm going to wreck this for him, but you can watch. I just, I know John and Jan and crew have been and today buttoning up, working so hard, the budget message, get it all prepared. But I, I do get a kick when John gets done making the presentation. You can almost see this visible load that comes off, saying, "Now you're on your own."
Right, yeah.
"I've told you what you need to know."
Right. Well, Hattash is working with them on the PowerPoint presentation, and so he was in my office with Lisa because they're transitioning some of these things, and Jan's like, "How much longer?" I'm like, "Two minutes."
I told him I could proofread his, his budget.
Hattash or?
No, John. Yeah, I'll proofread your budget presentation for you. No, so.
He wants it to be a surprise, but we know what it is. We're going to get by pretty well this year, but next year's going to be really tough. Just, that's the theme always, and now he's got to go redo something.
And we're going to invest in infrastructure, which we said last year, which is good. We're continuing to do that. What other surprises or non-surprises will be in there? We're not expanding a lot of programs.
We've expanded a lot of people. I know that, so, it's up to watch. Just watch.
In the, I know there's a couple new positions that I know. Sheriff, we're adding a patrol deputy.
Well, and I think also because we've done this new market study, we're going to possibly see, you know, like
Some adjustments.
Some adjustments because they're using that different way of calculating whether people are in market or not.
Gosh, we need another bridge event. I need something fun to look forward to.
Thank you, Jolene, for the photos. Anything else?
Well, yes, I do have one more thing. We have a really important presentation this afternoon out at the Red Lion. The Big Toy Grant is up, and this is for the spongy surface that we want, and also pave trails and an ADA restroom, so we don't just have two porta-potties, about half a million dollars.
Porta-potties just go into one now, so maybe that'd help.
Yeah, it's just under half a million dollars in a request, and it's me and Richard Walsh that are doing the presentation, along with Nate Brown, and Lori Christopher will be there, so.
And you're making it to who?
We're making it to the committee that decides who gets the money.
Oh. What committee is this?
Oregon Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so you'll know when?
Don't know when we'll know. I just know that it's at four o'clock this afternoon, so wish us luck.
You should try to be convincing once.
You think so?
Yeah.
You think I need a little passion?
Well, yeah, a little.
Yeah, you should talk about the big toy a little bit more.
She should get to know it better, and then she could make a better presentation. That's always important.
Well, I almost didn't get a chance to present because I'm an elected official, and they said elected officials are
Don't count.
Less convincing than, than people. In fact, I told the story about my grandson, and, because he was actually out at the big toy, and because he has autism and Down Syndrome, his balance isn't as good, you know, they're working with him on physical therapy. So walking on those wood chips is uneven, and, and it's just hard for him to do that, where if he's on that spongy flat surface, he just runs and jumps, and he just has such a great time. So I was telling them, and there was like, and one of the people, I won't name him, said, "Wow, that was a great story. It made you seem like a person instead of an elected official." And I was like, "Well, thank you."
Yeah, wasn't that nice? I want to question that surface. Do you, have you talked about color? Do they care if it gets hot, if it's black, or does it matter?
The surface that they're, that we're looking at is blue, I think. They're usually lighter colored.
Yeah, because it, I only know this from my boat motor, just, I'm always surprised how intensely hot it gets.
Yeah.
Well, it's in the water, just splash it.
What do you think?
So, anyway, that's another big deal that's happening today. Oh, and the last thing I was going to say too, on the calendar, all of those Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative subcommittees, we've graciously agreed that we will notice them to the public because there's four different entities, and we were noticing all the other meetings. So that's why you see them all on that, on that calendar, because that's, we took on that role.
So you're doing the big toy. I'm going Friday, Friday morning, I'm going to do a ride-along with Public Works up the Little North Fork to see what progress has been or hasn't been made.
Fill some holes.
You know, with their plan up there. And then Friday evening, we have the neighborhood group at Camp Cascade. We're getting together to, with the sheriff and Alan, to, and Forest Service to talk about the plan up there and make sure that we're better prepared this year. I heard that the phone was installed last week.
The one that got vandalized?
Salmon Falls.
Check it, will you?
I will. So some of that progress has been made, and then I think you saw a picture of the sign from, and I was very complimentary yesterday to our sign people that were out there. The sign they did for the Gallen House Bridge.
I was surprised when you pulled that off.
Really nice sign, and as Alan said, get a picture now before, right? I mean, that's just a shame, before bullet holes get put in it. But their, their whole new sign concept just gives everything a fresh, fresh look. So I asked them if we could, you know, move that forward, because it just makes a difference when you enter our parks to see that. And it shines at nighttime. You can see it as well, reflective. So, that's good. Yeah, let's see. We're working hard. Anything else? Okay, I think we will adjourn. Thanks back there for the pictures.